Bessie, I think it might be your turn for do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. I expect a very busy um hearing, and so I'm going to jump all over the place uh to hopefully get our town employees in and out of the meeting. So um Mr. Foster, you are first on the agenda on eight A, which is a discussion and possible vote to authorize the Tremont Nail Bond Anticipation Note, also known as a ban. Mr. Foster, would you identify yourself for the record and tell us what you need, please?
Uh John Foster, Finance Director Treasurer Collector for the town. And this evening, we have a three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar bond anticipation note for the Tremont Nail Remediation Project. Uh it's a taxable bond, so it's separate. We went out to bid on our uh tax exempt bonds. We still have two years of a five-year bond. This is in addition to that. This is the taxable portion uh due to the commercial nature of the property. Um so we went out to bid. We received two bids. Um they are higher than our past bids. Six point oh three six four was the uh taxable band and band interest rate. Um in the past, we've probably been for taxable bonds somewhere in the fours. However, on the other side, the money that the uh this is a CPC funded project, so the money in the bank account is earning four percent. So you're looking at a net difference of approximately two percent on this bond. It's a one-year uh ban. It's a one-year ban come due the same time this year and uh shortly after that in twenty twenty-five, both of these, the tax exempt and the taxable um taxable ban and the tax exempt bond will be paid off.
Thank you. If any of my members have a question, please raise your hand. Seeing no questions, Ms. Words, I would accept a motion.
Okay, and I believe the motion is that I move to award the bid to Piper Sandler.
Is there a second to that motion, please?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to award the bid for the bond anticipation note to Piper Sandler. Is any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you very much. Um Mr. Foster will require signatures tomorrow morning and he will be in his office with the documents to sign. Thank you very much, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckland, um you're here to talk about a CPC application. We will be having announcements. But I want, in fairness to our town employees who work from eight to whatever, six, um I want to let have them have the opportunity to get in before our announcements and before our hearing. Mr. Buckland, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Buckland, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And would you address the board on what it is that you're looking for, please?
Uh yes, this is for the Wareham Redevelopment Authority. As you know, the the Board of Segment is in charge of the and owns the Tremont Nail Factory, but the Redevelopment Authority has been advancing the uh the use and the redevelopment of the of the Tremont Nail Factory. In doing this, one of the uh projects that uh was that we saw that needed uh doing was the facade of the office building. That's the building is at the front of the at at the entrance to the Tremont Nail Factory, the two-story uh building that that uh sits at the front of the of the uh Elm Street. Uh there is lead paint in the on the uh surface of the of the building. It's probably the oldest building in the uh the cluster of buildings on the site. And what we're looking to do is to uh take off the the paint and repaint it and redo the sign. The uh the cost of of uh taking off the the lead paint and disposing of it and repainting the building would be ninety-nine thousand dollars by the estimate that we got. Uh what I've done is uh put a ten percent uh contingency on that and estimated that the CPA funding request would be a hundred and ten thousand for that work. Plus uh another five thousand for the the sign that's to be repainted on the uh the uh on the front of the building as well. Uh there there is a more expensive option for a gold leaf on the on the sign, but we've decided that gold paint is sufficient. And uh that would be a five thousand dollar figure. So we're looking at a hundred and fifteen thousand for the the re- redo of the uh repainting of the uh of the building facade.
Thank you, Mr. um Buckland. I thought that total ask was one thirty-five that WRA authorized.
I I had I had looked at the cost of the signs and that the larger figure was was for the large sign on the top of the main building.
Okay, thank you.
The smaller figure comes across for the smaller sign on the front of the office building.
Okay, so your total ask is what, sir?
One hundred and fifteen thousand.
Okay, and I did speak with you earlier today because I had spoken with a member of the CPC committee who wondered what um would happen to whether any restoration work was um thought about for the windows and other portions of the building.
Uh no, we did not uh add in the the windows uh. We are still negotiating with a uh a developer to uh take over the 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 use of the site. Uh uh eventually, we hope that that happens. In the meantime, uh what we can do is put plexiglass over the windows as we've done in the main building and preserve the windows and protect the interior of this of the structure.
Thank you. So your ask is for restoration work, not replacement work. It is restoration of historic.
That's correct.
Thank you. Uh if any one of my members has a question, please raise your hand. Mr. Slaven?
Uh we some years ago went ahead and uh basically redid the roof there, which tightened the building up quite a bit. Uh unfortunately, the building inside has severe mold issues, which anybody that's even the slightest uh being allergic to mold will probably last about a minute or two before they want to gasp their last breath. Uh my concern is that as we seal this building up even more, it's going to get worse. I'm hoping that uh we don't go ahead and make the same mistake a second time and do this and make the building completely uninhabitable for any human being. Uh so we need to seriously look at the inside of the mold issue because we're only going to increase the mold issues by doing this as well.
Do any of the rest of you have any questions or comments? Please raise your hand. No? Then Ms. Words, I would accept a motion, please.
Okay, I make a motion that we recommend to the CPC committee to um approve the application for restoration work at Tremont Nail Building, Office Building in the sum of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, please?
Second.
Mr. Bessie, thank you for your mo- your second. So any further discussion on the motion for the recommendation to the CPC? Seeing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
I'm gonna vote no because of the mold issue, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Voting no as well.
Thank you, Ms. Words.
I'm voting yes, um with the caveat that uh we pay attention to the issue of closing up the the building to such a point that the mold will continue to get worse.
Thank you. And I vote in the um affirmative, so the vote is three, two, zero. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Buckland. Thank you so much.
Very much.
And now, Ms. Words, we're going to, again, we're going to be coming back to the hearing and we will be coming back to announcements. Um but I'm going to ask that Ms. Words, I'd like to go to item six A, which is an appointment for an individual who will not be with us tonight, but he is a he serves on another historic commission and that and uh the historic Wareham Historic Commission has asked that Mr. Blair be appointed. Ms. Words?
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Robert Blair to the Wareham Historic Commission.
To a term to expire?
To a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to appoint Mr. Blair. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Slaven?
I just want to affirm the appointment. Mr. Blair has done a great job with the Historic District Commission. Uh some people might wonder why we have people on two similar commissions being on on both as if there's some kind of conflict. There is absolutely none. And again, Bob has done a great job for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. So any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes, so he is appointed. Um would you let Marcus Gomes and Joshua Farady into the meeting, please? Um Mr. Farady is our newly appointed conservation agent. We were asked by the Buzzards Bay Action Committee to replace um Mr. Pichet, who had been on the Buzzards Bay Action Committee forever. Um and because Mr. Farady is our new conservation uh agent, that would be the appropriate um appointment. We also have with us Mr. Marcus Gomes, who is applicant to the Wareham Cultural Council. He has been recommended for appointment to that. Uh so, Mr. Farady, would you just quickly introduce yourself and say hi to the board and um what you know about VBAC or what you know about whatever, but?
Sure. Uh my name is Josh Farady. Thank you for having me, Madam Chair and other select board members. Uh as far as my knowledge of the Buzzards Bay Action Committee, I've attended uh a handful of their meetings. Uh they're a good organization. Um their goal is to, you know, kind of foster restoration projects of equalizing areas. And uh they also tend to send out a lot of good information for Conservation Commission and other environmental organizations. So uh I think it's important to kind of keep a foothold there. That's for the information they have.
Great, thank you. There is no term of expiration for Mr. Farady because he's going to spend the next fifty years with us. Are there any questions of Mr. Farady? Please raise your hand. Mr. Slaven?
Uh not really a question. We've had this for a while. Uh I've backed up uh Mr. Pichet before when he couldn't make it because of internal commitments and stuff, so it's really good to have the conservation agent there. Uh as most, I would say probably ninety-nine percent of the town of Wareham has no idea that state of Massachusetts has been playing around with the TMDL uh regulations that are coming down uh five years ago, we're still waiting, which will directly affect every community along Buzzards Bay. If you could look at a map and you look at Wareham and all the communities above there, water flows north to south. Uh doesn't flow uphill like people sometimes try and tell us it does. And uh therefore, if you can imagine over the last hundred years or so, every time someone puts something into their septic system, their outhouse, whatever, it flows down and eventually gets to Wareham and goes into Buzzards Bay. When the TMDL does get released, which could be at any time, Wareham is gonna unfortunately be the result of some severe restrictions of what's allowed into Buzzards Bay and they're gonna blame us for it because we're basically the end of the toilet flush. Uh so it's extremely I haven't finished it, but it's extremely important that we basically keep an actual committee on working on this because we will have a lot of severe restrictions thrown on us down the line. Thank you very much, Josh.
Um may any other questions, comments? Ms. Words, I'll accept a motion, please, with no expiration dates.
I make a motion that we appoint Joshua Farady as the town representative to the Buzzards Bay Action Committee for the next fifty-five years. No, with no term.
Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Bessie has seconded it. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will see go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Farady. It was nice to meet you again this morning. Mr. Gomes?
Thank you.
Um would you introduce yourself and let us know why you have an interest in joining the Cultural Council, sir?
Hello, it's Marcus Gomes. Um thanks for having me. Uh I have an interest of just helping out the town any way I can. I've lived here my whole life. And um I just feel it's a better fit for me to just get more into the town and learn a little bit more about this town I grew up in and love.
Are you the disc golf person?
Yes, yes, I am.
So why don't you expand a little bit about your interests in the town?
Um I mean, you know, living here my whole life and I'm, you know, just noticing, I not to get into it, but you know, kids around my age didn't end up staying in town. You know, they either left before high school or they left in high school and had no interest with being in this town and wanted to see it flourish to the town it used to be or, you know, in the like the earlier ages. So for me, I just um I just see that, you know, I just, well, I just figure if I get into the town a little bit more and learn more, then I can help any way I can.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Gomes? Mr. Chadwick?
Uh not so much a question, but um I've known Mr. Gomes, uh Marcus, for uh a little while now, and I I just have to say, I think he would be a perfect addition to uh the Culture Council uh Council and the entire town. Um he has a a heart of gold and thrive to to for passion for this town like I've never seen. He just wants the best for this town, so I have a high recommendation for him.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments about Mr. Gomes? No? Then Ms. Words, I would accept a um motion.
I make a motion that we appoint Marcus Gomes to the Wareham Cultural Council for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
There's second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes, so thank you.
Ms. Words?
Yes, and thank you.
And myself, yes, and thank you. Mr. Gomes, I'm pretty sure you've already taken some of the required documentation, either the ethics or the open meeting law certificate. And I know that Ms. Brizoli spoke with you about the requirements before you get sworn in. You need to bring those documents to our office, which is on the third floor of Town Hall. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate your stepping forward.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. Okay, I don't see any representative from rare hospitality in terms of the um change of manager, so I am going to ask Ms. Words to open the hearing. However, before you do that, I'm going to let you know how we're going to do this. The discussion that we or the presentation that we will hear tonight um will be an explanation by our town clerk about an option that the town has. I expect that this is a um a presentation that will engender a lot of conversation. I will be, after the hearing is opened and the presentation, I will then go to each member of the Board of Select Board and see if they have any questions. Then I will go to the audience. The, it's a hearing. So um the the members of the audience, you'll you will raise your hand. We will let you into the meeting one at a time. You will have, you know, an appropriate period of time, hopefully a couple of minutes or something like that um to speak on what you would like. You may not ask questions because it's a hearing, so we want to hear what you have to say on the on the presentation. At the end of the number of people who want to speak, I will ask Ms. Words to continue the hearing until our next meeting. And the reason I'm going to continue, ask for a continuation of the hearing is that there may be other people who read about this meeting on social media or in the newspaper or something like that, and I want those individuals to have an opportunity to let their feelings be known. So if you are not able to speak tonight but would like to, I would ask you to please send an email to b o s at wareham dot m a dot u s. You would need to say, you know, I'm Susie Smith and I object to this, or I am I'm I'm okay with it or something like that. So I will not be allowing questions um except from my board so that we understand uh what is going on, and then we will go to the audience and then we will keep the hearing open. Is there any question from my board? Yes, Mr. Chief, no, okay. Ms. Words, I would ask you to oh ma- make a motion to open the hearing, please.
I make a motion that we um move to open the hearing with the town clerk to consider opting out of vote by mail for the municipal election taking place on Tuesday, May second, twenty twenty-three and continue until completion and will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of MGL chapter fifty-four, section two, excuse me, section twenty-five B A one.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion about opening the hearing? Hearing none or seeing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The hearing is now open. And Ms. Bessonette, would you introduce yourself and give us your presentation, please?
Hey, thank you, Lord. My name's Michelle Bessonette. I'm in the town clerk for Wareham. Thank you very much for entertaining my um suggestion that we approve this. Um I want to make it very, very clear, and I'm going to explain a little bit about each thing so that it's clear. Mail-in voting, early voting, came about because in our law in Massachusetts, we have absentee balloting or absentee voting. And that means that you have to have three reasons why you want to absentee vote. One of being religious, um two is you're sick, or three, you just can't be in town at that time. In my eighteen years of doing this and running so many elections and stuff, I have never turned down one person who asked for an absentee ballot. Because you can always plan not to be here and then be here. Oh, well, so I've always stuck them out. With that being said, in order to get the back door around, the government has decided to do the mail-in or the early voting with no excuse. Okay, and this is an unfan uh an unfunded mandate. And right now, we have boxes and boxes of absentee ballot forms that we can use. And we have to print out all the early mail or the mail-in ballots. And early mail, mail-in are both the same. Early voting and mail-in, both the same thing, okay? Um so my whole point to opting out is one, to save money on all the printing of all those forms that we would have to send out first to have them ask for them. We already have the absentee ballots. I will honor every single one of them. So everybody can ask for one, and everybody will get one, because you could just say you didn't plan to be there, and that's fine with me. I've never stopped anybody from absentee balloting because of that. The other thing is, we only have two people in our office still. And it gets very, very difficult for us in the office with just two people to process all these, because what happens when you have this now, the state requires us to handle them separately. So we have to take in the absentee ballots as well, because we have a lot of people and a lot of our seniors and a lot of other disabled people that are a permanent absentee ballot. And they will get those automatically. We have to put all absentees in the system and keep the paperwork separate from the mail-in or the early ballot. Okay, so that entails a lot of man-hours that we just don't have the people for right now. Okay, it wouldn't happen in a state election. It is required. There's nothing we can do about that, but opting out would help, I believe, the budget because of what I told you about the absentee. We already have a whole mess of those. The the state just sends us, had sent us tons and tons, and we never went through them. But we didn't throw them out either. We used them and we used them and we used them. The mail-in ballots, we have to actually print every one of those. They don't mail them to us anymore in bunches. We have to print every one of those out. So that's one of my cost concerns. The other one is that we're just understaffed right now. And it would cause great hardship for the office in order for us to do that. So those are my two major reasons. I don't want anybody to think that they can't get a ballot mailed. We will, with the absentee ballot application.
How does one get an absentee ballot application?
You, you don't even need the application. You can actually, there's an application on our website. There's an application on the um state's website. We can mail one to somebody if they want one. We could email it to somebody if they want one. Or all you have to do is write a letter to us stating that you're not going to be in town or whatever. You want an absentee ballot sent to this address and your signature. Done.
Thank you. Do any of my members have have any questions? Please raise your hand. Mr. Chadwick?
Uh two questions. Miss uh Ms. Bessonette, uh first question is, uh how does one do, how does one get a mail-in ballot? Not the not the uh
But the mail-in. It's the same thing almost, except it's a different form. And that form doesn't have one of the three questions why you need it.
Alright, so that's gonna lead into my next question. Um in two thousand fifteen, when I bought my house from my mother-in-law, she had my wife's two uncles, two cousins, my mother-in-law, my sister-in-law, her ex-boyfriend, and my grandmother-in-law uh all were registered to vote uh under this address. That's eight votes plus my wife and I. Could I have sent in for mail-in ballots for all of those people?
They all signed the application, and they were registered.
The rest of you to um mute yourself with the back, there's a back voice. I'm sorry, Mr. Chadwick. Go ahead.
So so what happens in that situation too, with an absentee ballot form and even the new mail-in forms, a family member can ask for, and it has to be a direct family member. So that's mom's, dad's, son's, kid, that kind of thing. So they can also request. So yes, you could request for your whole family.
So technically, it would have been ten votes that I could have had under my house that.
Yes.
Okay. Uh it answers my question. Just to make public note, I we have my wife and I registered to vote now, so everybody knows that. They don't think I'm playing any games.
Thank you. If any of my other members have a question, or Mr. Bessie?
Uh yeah, so I guess I just wanna, I just want to understand so that I can put my mind to the process. So the only difference that we're looking at from a mail-in ballot and an absentee ballot is the process that the town clerk would have to go through to get the ballot to the said individual. It wouldn't stop somebody from being able to vote if we were to say that we wanted to move on from mail-in ballots. It would just be the fact that they would get it absentee, and they would then in turn have to deliver that to the box at the outside of the town hall, or would they still be able to mail that ballot in? They could, they can still mail it in. Okay, but but it just, it, so to me, it to me, just from a quick synopsis, it it sounds like it's kind of like really a no-brainer to eliminate this process, um because it's more convoluted and just ti- you know, more time and more money than we have to spend.
Yes, but it it's it is that, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Bowen would kind of go, she's tweaking it a little bit. But my whole thing, ever since I started doing this job, was anybody who wanted an absentee ballot, anybody could say that they don't plan to be there that day. There's no election police going around saying, E, you were, you were there that day. You know, you have devoted person. There's nothing like that. I mean, you did not feel well that day. You may have depression. You may have anxiety. I've lived with people like that. And I know how that is, and it's debilitating. Now, they may have every expectation that they are not going to be able to make it to that place at that time. And I'm good with that, because I want everybody to be able to vote. My whole thing has been, everybody's able My whole thing has been, everybody's able to vote. The only thing that this is doing for us as a town is saving us quite a bit of money, not having to print out those things, and also saving Donna and myself a lot of time and effort and extra hours. Now, I don't, you know, I'm salaried. I don't get anything out of her, but I'm certainly going to put Donna in for it. She works above and beyond. And the last time we had an election, there was so much separating to do so much everything. We spent Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, Columbus Day weekend, getting those ballots out.
Thank you.
This would save us from that.
You're, you're, I'm being texted by a lot of people saying that your, the quality of your voice is very poor on the transmission. So what I'm going to ask each one of the members is, as you ask your questions, to restate what it says so that it comes across in a more clear voice. Do you know what I'm saying? Not to be, not to be insulting. I just want people to understand, you have said three or four times, you want everyone to be able to vote. This is not an attempt to get anyone not to vote. Okay, thank you. Ms. Words? Yeah?
I would just like to make an observation. I happen to be, for those of you who have not been down to the clerk's office often, I happen to have to be there several times during this last voting situation. And I will tell you, that office was filled to the hilt with envelopes that had to be opened and envelopes that had to be sent. It was like a landslide. So typically, I don't see the two people we have at staff, even if they work twenty-four hours a day, to be able to handle that easily. So what happens to people who decided it's easier to vote by mail? It can be, but many of us can still vote at the polling booth. And those votes and ballots get handled immediately very differently. What they don't do, what that doesn't do is basically make the clerk's office shut down for several days to a week to get this done.
Thank you. Does any, Mr. Slaven, do you have any comments? Are you muted? Can the rest of you mute yourselves? Because again, there's a terrible back echo.
My, my comment really is more that the Mr. Sullivan doing his budget, you know, already has a budget in for the clerk's office for the function itself. So it's really a discussion of, you know, the availability of assets of hours of the people working in the clerk's office to get this done. And there has been obviously a very strong push for mail-in voting in the last few years across the country. There's been questions about people playing games with it or not playing games with it. I don't believe that's the case at all. So as far as the dollar cost and stuff, I think it's already been in the budget for a while. It sits there. I don't think that's the issue. The issue really is, is there too much excess work for the clerk's office with two and a half people there to handle it or not? I'm not sure what the answer is there, but that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments from my board members, I'm going to ask the attendees if they would like to speak. The rule, again, what I'm going to do is, you would, I would ask you to raise your hand. Then I will have you let into the meeting. And then I will ask you to make your comments. There are no, you would, you would be, you would be commenting and not engaging in a conversation. So please raise your hand if you would like to ask a question. Would you let Sandy Cormier into the meeting, please, Mr. White? And I'm going to let you in and out one at a time. Okay? And when we let you in, would you please identify yourself with your address as well as give us your comments? Thank you very much. Ms. Cormier? We don't see you.
Sorry, I was muted. And I, I'm trying to turn on my video, but I, I just don't know how.
Okay, why don't you just identify yourself and let us hear your comments?
Yeah, Sandy Cormier, three oh seven Marion Road. I just wanted to speak that, you know, I'm for mail-in voting, and that the difference that I saw, and maybe I just don't understand, is that someone like my aunt would get something in the mail, and it would be a ballot, and she could mail it back in. She's, she doesn't remember, or she'll forget that may, that day is a voting day. She doesn't keep track as well as maybe I do. And it's, it's a little reminder that it's time to vote, and some people that aren't paying attention to these meetings might need that little push of a reminder. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, they would get their ballot in the mail? Isn't that how, when you opt in to be a person that gets mail-in voting? I was under the impression you would just get your information through the mail without having to call in? So and if that's not the case, then we all would call in anyway? We all call in for mail-in voting, Michelle? Well, I'm not, I don't want to answer.
So I'm going to allow Ms. Bissinette to restate the process of getting one of these ballots. Okay? She's not answering your question. She's, she's repeating what she had stated. Okay, Ms. Cormier?
And it wasn't the process of
Excuse me, can you just?
It's mail-in voting. Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Bissinette?
There is no difference as far as how it's done. It's done the exact same way. You have to apply for it. We don't send them out. That only happens with the state elections or the federal elections, where the state sends out those cards. A local election, that will not happen. We are not registered, we are not required to do that. What you need to do is you have to either give us the signature and ask us that you want an absentee ballot. If we don't opt out, you want a mail-in ballot, or you send in the application with your signature. It's the same in both cases. The only difference with the process is, with an absentee ballot, there's three questions they're going to ask you, and you pick one to say why. And like I said, the one that I always picked would be, I don't plan on being able to attend.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest, Ms. Bissinette, that you actually post on the website, under the clerk's website, and also have Mr. Underhill post an explanation of what it is that you would be, that people would be able to do. Ms. Cormier, thank you very much. And
One more little piece to that. I know I'm probably going over, but I was glad to hear that the cost is covered. And I also just wanted to, I didn't know if there's any exploration into getting Michelle help. Maybe the poll workers could get called back in? Not a question, just a comment. Thank you.
For the comment, Ms. Cormier. Nice to see you, or I didn't see you this evening. Nice to hear from you this evening. Good night. Would you let Ms. Kenny into the meeting, please, Mr. White? Would I, you identify yourself with the record, please, and state your address? And we can't hear you yet.
Sorry, Diane Kenny, Ten Old Woods Road. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Again, these are comments, not questions.
Yes, I understand. I have several, I have several comments. I understand the explanation with the early voting and the mail-in voting and the absentee voting. I would also like to comment that there is no voter fraud. I don't believe that anybody in Wareham will be requesting absentee or mail-in voting for family members that don't live with them. We heard that it could cost quite a lot of money to print. Obviously, we've also heard that that is already in the budget. It's funny that Mr. Chadwick was inferring voter, voter fraud, that he could have committed voter fraud. To me, it sounds like we're being asked to answer the three questions and to lie so that we can avoid mail-in voting and use absentee voting. That is not something that I would do. If I am in town that day, then, you know, I would vote. If I was able to vote, then I would vote. I'm not going to request an absentee ballot and lie on it in order to mail in, in order to basically mail-in vote. If the town can't staff the clerk's office, then that is a shame, and I'm sorry to hear that, but I don't believe that it's a good enough excuse not to offer mail-in voting. Again, I'll say it a hundred more times, not tonight, but there is no voter fraud. Opening up voting to as many people as possible and making it as easy as possible for them to do that is democratic. Anything else is anti-democratic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Enjoy the evening. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. Hayes, I've been told that I may not be able to hear you because apparently your platform may or may not support us hearing you, but I would ask that you let Ms. Hayes in. If we have trouble hearing you, Ms. Hayes, I would ask that I can see you. Okay. I can't hear you, ma'am.
Here? I'm here?
Yes, ma'am. Could you identify, thank you, identify yourself and state your address, please?
Sure. My name is Yanni Hayes. I live on Farmer's Lane. And I am, I am in concurrence with Ms. Kenny. I also would add a few comments. The state differentiates between absentee ballots and mail-in ballots. I called the Secretary of State when I read that you were voting to opt out of mail-in ballots potentially. And I spoke to Secretary Galvin's office. They said that, of course, opting out is allowed, but they encourage mail-in ballot. They said nothing about, and we're also allowing people to put in absentee ballots if they haven't printed out mail-in ballots. It was not anything wishy-washy, excuse me. It was clearly one process. And when I downloaded the form for mail-in ballots, I don't, I couldn't find it, so I have to recall what it said. It said, you know, it asked for your name, your address, your birth date, and then it gave two boxes, one of which to check. One said, this would be for all ballots mailed to you. And the second one was for a particular voting event mailed to you. Now, that's very different. I didn't hear the clerk say that the absentee says you can check a box that say, all ballots will be sent to me. So two, two points. It seems like there's tweaking, and I don't, I agree with Ms. Kenny. I'm not supportive of tweaking things as important, not things as important, the, the important issue of voting rights. And mail-in ballots covers any reason. You don't have to give the reason. It's not intrusive. It's meant to encourage voting. It's very specific. It's very clear. It's very simple for that purpose. Now to say, well, we don't have enough of these, and it's too expensive to print, and it's too complicated. I can understand those are concerns. Those are administrative concerns. But with voting rights, I want it nice, clear, crisp. I don't want to be asking for an absentee ballot when I want a mail-in ballot for the particular reasons that are stated on that form and that the Secretary of State specifically encourages the right to vote by mail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Thank you very much for your comments. Good evening. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Please raise your hand. I don't see anyone else with their hands raised. May I ask one of my compatriots to please double-check the list? I don't see anybody else's hand up.
There's no, there's no other hands up.
Thank you.
I'm checking the list right now. I don't see any.
Thank you. Then I am going to ask Ms. Words to make a motion to continue this hearing. And if that motion is to carry, I will again let the public know how they could make comments directly to our office. We, this will be on the agenda of the seventh of February, which is the next time we will be meeting. Ms. Words, you're muted, Ms. Words.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing regarding the opting-out ability of voting by mail for the municipal town election during taking place on Tuesday, May second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second to that motion?
Okay.
Motion made and seconded to continue the hearing to the time specific of February seventh. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will go for a roll call vote for continuation. Mr. Slaven? You're muted, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The meeting, the hearing is continued until the seventh. And I'm going to ask Ms. Bissinette again to get on the website, on your page as well as the website, the information that you've given us tonight, if you don't mind. And I will also ask anyone who is interested in sending comments, and I would ask that the press put this in as well. Comments may be sent to b o s at wareham dot m a dot u s. I'm going to say it again. Wareham, b o s at wareham dot m a dot u s. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bissinette, and good evening. Thank you. Is anyone here from the Longhorn Steakhouse? I don't, I didn't see anybody earlier, and I don't recognize any of the names. If you are here representing Longhorn Steakhouse, would you please raise your hand? I don't see anybody. Okay. This is a routine change of manager. All of the paperwork is in order for it. So, Ms. Words, I would ask for a motion on seven A.
Make a motion that we approve the application from Rare Hospitality International, DBA Longhorn Steakhouse, twenty-four twenty-one Cranberry Highway, Wareham, for a change of manager.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. And again, the paperwork has been reviewed by the office as well as by myself. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The application is granted. Five zero zero. Okay, discussion and possible vote to set the number of members of the Cultural Council at seven, which is item eight B. The Cultural Council was established by the Board of Selectmen in nineteen seventy-nine, began active working in nineteen eighty. The council receives money from the state of Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it, on an annual basis, is able to grant money to different individuals or bodies that want to put on, for instance, like a puppet show or a dance recital or something like that. We appointed Mr. Gomes earlier to the council. The council has asked that we set the number of members at seven. The state has given very vague instructions. The council may consist of more than five and less than twenty-two members. But nowhere has the Board of Selectmen said the body will consist of X number of members. And without that definitive number, I don't know how you can have a quorum. So it is the request of the council that we set the limit of, the number of members at seven. Any further discussions on that? Questions for me? Then I would ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we vote to set the number of members for the Cultural Council at seven.
Motion made and seconded to establish the number at seven. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Item D, we think all of us have seen the plans for Bayview Park. Mr. Sullivan asked that I step in and give this presentation. The request from, from Mr. Sullivan on town owned property, which is known as Bayview Park, which is in downtown Onset. Is it one million eighty thousand dollars from the C P C? The work is extensive. And it will bring the park into ADA compliance. It's an extremely interesting project. And again, the layout has been in Town Hall and either in room twenty-seven or twenty-four for several months. So unless you are, have questions that I can't answer, I would ask that you. And the information was all in your packet about what it is and, you know, what needs to be done. So I would ask for a motion to approve unless you have questions. Or recommend. Mr. Slaven?
Just some background, I'll try and do this quickly. We've been under the gun as selectmen, as Mr. Sullivan has, as has Municipal Maintenance Director. To fix the metal railings along Onset Ave, along the park here. We've been told, well, we have this possibility of a large liability. Someone was to fall onto the street from there. The walkways were in bad shape. You know, the gazebo was up there, but the things needed to be done, you know, ADA compliance, et cetera. I believe one of the residents was very vocal for quite a while, and you know, Sullivan back and forth on this. I asked Mr. Sullivan to back away a little bit and I explained that we have a couple grants that we're working on. Plus, we have the CPA program. And the idea is something which I always tell people, if we're gonna do it, let's do it once and do it right. Do it so it's gonna last a long time. Mr. Sullivan has come up with Mr. Manad's stuff. With a project that's approximately one point five man, which has a CPA grant, outside grant as well to do this. These monies are basically locked into this type of thing only. You can't just take it, fix a road with it or anything else. Because we get these comments all the time about that. It's an important piece. It's kind of basic upgrade and also makes the whole park much more usable. For tourism, et cetera, it's a plus. And there's no reason not to go ahead and do this and do it, as I said, once and do it right and do it safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Ms. Words?
I make a motion that we vote to recommend to the C P C Committee application for rehabilitation and improvements to Bayview Park.
Motion made and seconded to vote to recommend to the C P C Committee the application for the rehabilitation and improvements to Bayview Park. They actually have seen this presentation a couple of times, I believe. Any further discussion on the motion to recommend? And the figure is one million eighty thousand dollars. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, five zero zero. Under eight E, discussion and possible vote to establish a bylaw review committee is required under the charter. Under the Charter, section eight dash four. Section B, no more than forty-five days following the election at which the Charter is amended. And it actually was signed into law on the twenty-ninth of last year. The Select Board shall appoint a special committee of at least three members to review the existing bylaws of the town. In order to bring them into conformity with the provisions of this charter. Said committee shall file a report with recommendations at the following town meeting. I will state that I think that's an impossible task for the next town meeting. But I want to throw this out here and I'd like to have us know that we will be looking for. At least three members, but I would ask that we discuss right now, how many members you want to actually have. Ms. Words?
So it might be nice to have three, but just with some of the few projects I've been involved in. Where we've asked for five or seven, we've ended up having half of them be available. Most of the time. And I mean, people who are doing this are, are volunteering their time and their expertise. And we need to make sure we have a large enough headcount to carry on. I am more inclined to want to see a committee of five. And if there are even more people interested than that, then have one or two sit by as associates to fill in if necessary. Because it's an important project and it is consuming. And I think if we do just three people, we'll lose it.
Thank you. I will note that there was a bylaw review committee approximately ten years ago. And there was a bylaw review committee ten years ago. And that's all I'm going to say, because there, I don't believe there was any activity or made of recommendation. Are there any other comments or questions on this? Mr. Slaven?
What's also extremely important when we do this, we need to set up some type of criteria that we can actually implement. For the people on this type of committee, because we are dealing with bylaws, which means we have to deal with master law. Obviously, we'll need input from Town Council when we're doing this as we go along. And the bottom line is, it's nice to do, but unless you have people that have some kind of training, whether they're a lawyer. Or, you know, or municipal government somehow or another, it's extremely confusing at times. Master general law doesn't always make sense. We can be more restrictive, but we can't be less. And some of the issues we're running into with lawsuits lately. Due to bylaws and zoning bylaws, which is different, is that we become more restricted in certain areas. And the world is changing. We need to really look closely at what's going on. So, yes, this is important. Also, as a sidebar, we have available for us through the Board of Selectmen. And through the planning board, twenty hours of each for work from the Serpent, which is the southeast region. Planning Economic Development District to help us with this, to do basically work in the background to put things together to help us out as well. So I'm hoping we take advantage of all the assets that are available and do this once. And again, let's do it once and do it right.
Mr. Slaven, I'd ask for what your thoughts are on the number?
Madam Chairman, Mr. Bessie got kicked out.
Oh, yeah, he did.
Oh.
I find that.
Hang on a second. Mr. White, when Mr. Bessie reappears, please let him back in. I don't know what happened. Thank you. I, I noticed there was a change on the screen, but I was paying attention to Mr. Slaven. Sorry.
I would say that basically, if you want to have five and have a couple associates as backup, you know, and basically put it up is that. If five people aren't available, then the associates can actually participate and vote. Once you get past five people, it gets really hard to put something together. And at the same time, when you have three, it's hard to get the work done at all. And you also have issues with open meeting law violations as well when you have three.
Excellent. Mr. Chadwick, do you have any comments or questions?
None right now.
Um, well, it's a. Discussion and possible vote. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Bessie just came in.
Oh, excellent. Mr. Bessie, I'm gonna wait until I can see you and hear you, see whether you have any comments that you would like to add. The recommendation so far is five members with possible two associates from Ms. Words and Mr. Slaven both.
So I got, I got kicked out right as Ms. Words was finishing up her. And I had put my hand up and then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, but then I got kicked out. So, but no, I, I, I agree. I, I think, I, I think five members. Is appropriate with having a couple of ancillary members that could step in in the absence. I think, you know, anything less than that, you really can't have a, I don't want to say a competitive balance, but you can't really have discussion back and forth about. What might work, what, what doesn't work when you have that small of a number. So, you know, I would concur with, with the masses that, you know, a five plus two. Would probably make the most sense if we were going to a, a review committee.
I have no further comments. Certainly, if this committee is established, I would encourage them to use the twenty, twenty hours, twenty to B O S and twenty to. To planning, because I have to tell you that having spent two years working on the Charter. And then looking at the bylaws, I shake my head because they are not always consistent. And that's a real issue. And those of us who've been around more than, more than, you know, a long time. It, it is a huge undertaking. Ms. Words, I'll accept a motion from you.
So. I was gonna ask a question, but I'll just.
Sure, I'm sorry.
No, I'll just make a motion and then we'll decide if it's the right motion.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we vote to establish a bylaw review committee as required under the Charter. Consisting of five people with two associates.
Second.
Okay, so let me ask you if you have an expiration date. So something like. A term to expire after they have reported to a town meeting. Is that part of your motion?
That could really fill it out. The question is, do you want to limit the time? Is, are you looking at a three-year process? I mean, do you really want to put? And Mr. Slaven has shaken his head, no.
Yeah, so that's why I just asked you to put that squishy, that the, Article eight four B actually says to the next town meeting. If we appointed somebody tomorrow morning and told them to have something ready for town meeting, they would leave town. It's impossible to get it done by the next town meeting. So I would ask that you have it a report to a future town meeting.
So I vote that we establish a bylaw review committee.
You move. Don't vote.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm gonna vote too, but now, but now I'll move. I gotta move that we establish a bylaw review committee as required under the Charter, consisting of five people and two associates. To. I still don't know how to put those words in.
I'll say a term to expire at a future time.
A report given to a, a future town meeting.
That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, I would try and put a timeframe of eighteen months, my prior experience doing this before. It gives you at least two town meetings, possibly three.
Okay. Ms. Words, would you accept that?
I, so we're gonna.
Okay, and Mr. Bessie, do you accept that as part, oh, it was Mr. Chadwick. It was Chadwick. Is that okay with you? Okay, so the motion now has a time frame limit.
Not to exceed eighteen.
Not to exceed the eighteen months, okay. Any further questions and comments? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much, five zero zero. Then Ms. Words, item F, the discussion, the possible vote to adopt a policy regarding board and committee volunteers. We actually do this right now. We require that our committee members take, before they are sworn in. We require that they have completed the Commonwealth of Massachusetts training regarding ethics and the open meeting law. And they must present that evidence to the Board of Selectmen. So what we are doing is sort of codifying what in fact we do. All town employees are required to do annually open meeting law and ethics. So we are making, or we're, we are suggesting that our volunteers have the same protection that is afforded. All of our town employees by being familiar with those two laws. Miss, any questions? Ms. Words? How about a motion to?
Hold on, Mr. Slaven just had his hand up.
I don't know whether he was batting a fly or raising his hand.
No, no flies, yeah.
Okay.
The one issue we have constantly, because we have so many commissions boards. You know, et cetera, is that the chairs of the committees are supposed to keep track of who is up to date and not up to date. Even the Board of Selectmen we missed, and we run out, you know, where people aren't really certified anymore. I would like to see somehow, because I, this information is turned in to the clerk's office and I apologize for putting more work on the clerk's office. But I think it should be a digitized record where, you know, anyone, the chair of any committee can go, you know, through the town. And look up, you know, their committee members and see if they're current, when their date is renewed, because it's a constant problem. It's embarrassing a lot of times because you just forget, you lose track of time. So there needs to be a little piece in there that. Keeps all the members there and it makes it easier to keep them there.
I, we cannot ask. I mean, the chair and the clerk of each board committee commissioner council is. Under, you know, under suggestions from the Attorney General's Office, they're in charge of making sure that the things are done and things are complete. Yes, it is a pain. But I don't think that that's appropriate part of this motion. I hear you and I think that we will work. To try and get the records digitized. Yes, Mr. Slaven?
Again, the clerk's office is the clearinghouse for this. We all have to turn paperwork into the clerk's office. That's the central piece. As one goes there, that is the most logical place to control it.
Yes, sir. Your motion, Ms. Words, no, Ms. Words?
Yeah. So I believe the motion should, I understand. So what Mr. Slaven is saying, we either add that to a motion or, or not add it. I'm concerned that if we add it, we're mixing. Oil and fire, because they're two different issues. One is what our policy is. The second is, how is, how does it function? How do you implement it? And I don't know how you put something in that the clerk has to do in this motion. So I'll do whatever the group wants, but I'm inclined to. Think that it needs to be separated. And I don't know if Mr. Bessie or Mr. Chadwick have any input or insight on this.
Nope. Okay, Ms. Words, I'll accept a motion to, exactly the way it's written, to vote to adopt policy number twenty. Go ahead. Oh, that's the number on the policy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt policy number twenty-three dash oh-three. Regarding board and committee, a policy regarding board and committee volunteers.
You're second to that motion. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Hello, Epstein.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero one. Thank you very much. Discussion and possible vote to renew the animal shelter agreement with the town of Wareham. Town of Wareham used to have an animal shelter where we kept dogs and cats and whatever else was picked up. That became an impossible thing to maintain. We've had for several years an agreement with the town of Lakeville. You have a copy of the agreement in your packet, and so I would ask, unless you have any questions about it. This is an annual renewal of that contract with the town. Seeing no questions, I will get a motion from Ms. Words.
Make a motion that we vote to renew the animal shelter agreement with the town of Lakeville for the year of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zero zero. Thank you. Next, Ms. Words is just a, an accepting of a, a very generous donation, please.
We, I make a motion, we accept a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from Gretchen Grunstrom to be. To the animal control don, donation account for various emergency situations involving domestic pets within the town of Wareham.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This would be in, if they picked a cat or a dog up that had to be immediately taken to a vet or something like that. So it is under the control of the Department of Natural Resources. Very generous donation. Any further discussions or questions? Roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
My, Ms. Wertz?
Yes, thank you.
And myself, yes, and very much thank you. Ms. Wertz, um, just a uh, motion for item I, please.
I make a motion that we vote to approve abatements in the amount of two hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents for opt-out and reduction fee applications.
This has to do with trash collection. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five zero zero. And then the possible, the discussion about setting the um, times and stuff for the town meeting under item J. You have that documentation in your What we did and we do every year is we, we um, we post when things are going to happen. Now, so in your um, in your packet, it has process for calling a town meeting. And so I would ask that you, unless you have any questions, make a motion to simply adopt that. Ms. Wertz?
I make a motion that we vote to establish dates for the process of calling a town meeting for the twenty-three annual spring meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to establish the dates for the process. Any further discussion on that motion? Mr. Slaven?
I just wanna make sure that we get it out to the newspapers and get it up on the town website as well, since we're not listing each date, you know, specific right now, which is no problem.
Right, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five zero zero. There is no town administrator's report. Let me just do the minutes and then we'll go back to announcements if you, ladies and gentlemen, don't mind. Ms. Wertz, I'll accept a um, motion on item B.
So I make I make a motion on that we accept the minutes of October twentieth, twenty nineteen and October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Um, the, one of these meetings had already been transcribed, had not been submitted to the Board of Selectmen to be approved. The second was when we were in the process of um, losing a longtime employee and getting a new time, new employee. And that one fell through the cracks. After these have been accepted, we will have no outstanding minutes owed. Um, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And the next one, please, Ms. Wertz?
I make an mo- motion that we approve the executive session meeting minutes. We approve and hold the executive session meeting minutes of December twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve and hold. Any further discussion? Hearing none of, yes, Mr. Except.
Uh, excuse me, there's
And the Scrivener's error, Ms. Wertz?
Yes, except acknowledging the Scrivener's error, or that should be December twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Right. The minutes themselves, the body of the minutes shows the correct date. This is a Scrivener's error. We will note it correctly in our um, minutes. So you are voting on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you. Um, no further discussion, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie? Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Um, thank you, and myself, five zero zero. Okay. I think we have everything except announcements. Am I right? Is anybody keeping score besides me?
And that announcements and the uh, any board comments, uh, ways you know, report.
Yes, so let's do more announcements. Um, liaison initiative reports and boards comments all at once. So I'm gonna go with Mr. Bessie first.
Oh, why me? No, no, and no.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Mr. Chadwick?
Uh, I have one announcement that was brought to my attention today. Uh, we talked about uh, at our last meeting, uh, new businesses. And on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, the Bluefoot Cafe uh, will be celebrating their one-year anniversary. Uh, all day Saturday, they will be um, doing little deals, I guess, throughout the day and uh, stop by for your favorites.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Okay, uh, we'll go down the list. I'll do this quick as I can. First, I'd like to thank Municipal Maintenance for the pre-treating of the roads uh, for the storm on Sunday and Monday. Uh, it saved a lot of people aggravation with the roads icing up, et cetera. Uh, we're gonna have another storm that looks like Friday with the same kind of conditions as far as icing. So again, because we haven't had much, please be careful on the roads. It's easy to forget how to drive when the roads are icy and you hit the brakes and you don't really stop, you slide. Um, the uh, Municipal Maintenance, uh, you know, with the transfer station, uh, some of the people working with transfer station are getting uh, kind of verbally abused when they, people come in, don't have a sticker. Uh, whether they're from Carver or Wareham complaining that they should be able to come in even though they haven't got their sticker yet. Uh, the rules and regulations are very straightforward. Don't pick on the employees. They're doing their job and it's that simple. Um, the state of Massachusetts, infinite wisdom, um, has like called the midnight massacre specials. We have two things at the last minute that have come through that they basically put in place through the federal government of the state. Number one is basically the septic system rules that are changing drastically for those communities along Buzz's Bay, et cetera. There will be a meeting tomorrow with the University of Massachusetts uh, for basically uh, ourselves and the other communities to sit and complain and make comments, but the rules are already in place and we'll see what happens. Uh, they're pretty draconian and they're extremely expensive. The homeowners who wanna expand their homes and have to add to the septic system, these will be the latest version of nitrogen-reducing systems, et cetera. I will be there, mostly against Patrick McDonald, a health agent, cannot make it because the Board of Health meets tomorrow. So I will be there and I'll transfer the information to him as well, and I'll be lobbying against this particular set of rules. Uh, the other piece, I'm gonna read something from our Director of Inspection Services. Uh, again, uh, two days before the end of the year, uh, the state decided to uh, initiate new stretch code rules. As everybody knows or doesn't know, Wareham became a green community several years back. And in order to do that, we had to adopt the stretch codes. The stretch codes are rules and regulations for building, et cetera. Uh, I was basically responsible for the town voting to go ahead and do this because the stretch code rules, which you, you get uh, basically become mandatory for every municipality, usually within two years of them modifying or changing the stretch code. So it made no sense to sit there and hold off when you can get a quarter of a million dollar grant and continue to get money anyways, because two years later, you have to do this anyways. So they've gone ahead and made some really drastic changes for the cost of building homes, et cetera. So I would, if you would give me a few minutes. Uh, this is not gonna be great detail because we're gonna be lobbying on this one pretty hard as well. But this is basically direct from Paul Turner, our Director of Special Services. Hi. It's been very busy here today in the building department. I think it would be a waste of time expressing my personal thoughts regarding the new code change and the way it was implemented by the D O E R. Basically, it's not very happy. I do feel that the general public should be aware of how it's going to affect them. This is not a code change, but that the builders and developers of new construction will be the only ones directly impacted with the associated costs. That gets passed along to the end consumer in the long run. The code change directly impacts existing homeowners. Would like to expand his or her dwelling unit. The following is very important information that homeowners and remodeling contractors should understand completely. Additions over one thousand square feet must follow the HERS, H E R S pathway and meet the HERS requirements for additions in table one of this email. Additions under a thousand square feet will also have to follow the base energy codes. Additions that exceed a hundred percent of the condition floor area of the existing dwelling unit again, must meet HERS requirements. Level three alterations, over fifty percent of the home is renovated and refigured, has to find in the International Existing Building Code, I E B C, must meet the HERS requirements in table one. The level three alteration is a common renovation for the town of Wareham. Um, we're looking at something that was done basically a couple of days before, again, the end of the year. Uh, it, the, these codes will go into effect probably within the next six to nine months, actually be implemented. And probably within two years will be required anyways. But I just wanna let the public know that we're not sitting back and ignoring what happens to our residents and the cost of uh, doing business as far as construction work, home renovation, et cetera. So we're gonna be lobbying for this one pretty hard as well. Uh, whether we're able to make any changes or not, it depends on how much support we can get from the three hundred fifty-one communities in the state of Massachusetts. So I just wanna give people a heads up that we are doing everything we can. We're watching what's going on. We're trying to protect you, the citizens. And that's it for today.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz?
I'm speechless from the last presenter, and so I think I'll just stay speechless.
Thank you. Um, I have nothing to add. And so unless I hear somebody complaining about wanting to stay here any longer.
Motion to adjourn, dear.
Thank you.
Second.
Not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote. Motion made and seconded to adjourn at eight twenty-two. Roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
I won't abstain this time.
I know.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Abstain.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Wertz, yes. And myself, yes. So, Mr. Chadwick, your vote is abstained?
Yes.
You guys are killing me. Okay, um, the mo- the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much and good night Wareham and good night, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.